Okay, it's seven o'clock now. Can we start with the invocation by Reverend Mary Holofield from West Covina United Methodist Church? And then our pledge of allegiance will be done by Councilmember Fred Sykes. Will you please rise?
Our gracious God, we ask that you would hear our prayer. We praise you for your creation, this universe. We thank you for this great country in which we live, for this fine city. We expect that the next couple of months will be challenging nationwide as our chosen leaders will be decided. We know that if we keep turning to you in prayer and remember the lessons we have learned in life, we know that you will grant us wisdom and strength to persevere. Lord, there are some among us who are suffering because of illness and others who are deeply troubled. We ask that you would extend to them your healing touch and comfort their hearts and minds. We thank you, dear God, for this opportunity to gather with fellow citizens. We're grateful for the leaders of this fine city, for their dedication and willingness to give their time and their energy to make this life in West Covina an experience that all of us can enjoy. We ask that you watch over and protect the men and women who are serving in the military, at home and abroad, men and women who are enduring hardship and loneliness right now because they have chosen to serve our country and to protect our freedom. So we pray that you would watch over all of us, that you would keep us safe as we go into our separate lives at the end of today's gathering, and we just thank you in your most holy name. Amen.
Please join me in the prayers to the flag of our nation. Ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam City Clerk, roll call, please.
Mayor Tui.
Here.
Mayor Protam Sanderson.
Here.
Councilmember Herford.
Here.
Councilmember Setello.
Here.
Councilmember Sykes.
Here.
Okay, report out a closed session. Matt, Mr. City Attorney.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Members of the City Council, the record should reflect that the City Council did recess to closed session to consider the items as listed on the notice of special meeting prior to this City Council meeting. This is my report out from the closed session from that meeting. With regard to the first item on that special meeting agenda, conference of labor negotiators pursuant to Government Code Section 549-57.6. The record should reflect that all members of the City Council were present for this closed session. A report was provided by staff. No final action was taken on this item. There's nothing further to report. Regarding to the second item, conference with legal counsel anticipated litigation pursuant to Government Code Section 549-56.9C. Record should reflect that all members of the council were present for this item. There was a report provided by staff and direction provided by staff. However, no final action was taken. Nothing further to report on this item. Concerning the final item on this agenda, public employment pursuant to Government Code Section 549-57. Again, all members of the council were present for this item. There was direction provided by the council on this item. However, no final action was taken on this item and nothing further to report. And that concludes my report out from closed session.
Thank you. Changes the agenda, Mr. City Minister.
Yes, sir. Two items that we have. One, before you, there is a memo and correspondence related to item number two, which pertains to the Del Norte Park. And also before you is addendum to the staff report for item number nine pertaining to the tow contract.
Thank you. If we can have our Police Chief Frank Wills, please come down. You're supposed to introduce the honoree.
Have retired Assistant Chief Darrell Myrick come down for a moment, please. Ladies and gentlemen, while Darrell walks down, I'll get a quick intro. Darrell actually retired from the department in 2007. What you may not know about him, if you're new to council chambers, he is one of the most highly decorated athletes in Police and Fire Olympics history. He has won over 150 medals. Over 100 of them have been gold medals. For four years, he held the record, California's toughest cop. He's just an amazing and amazing athlete. Former captain of the swim team at Edgewood High School, grew up here, raised his family here. And we've recognized him in previous council meetings, but what he did this summer was especially impressive. At the age of 56 or 57, he decided to enter five events at the International Police and Fire Olympics over the summer. Entered five events, five gold medals, and we think that's worthy of commendation. Darrell, I never forget going to your retirement dinner and seeing all your swim photos. I'll leave it at that.
I can rock some Speedos. Go ahead. Now, go ahead and get that image out of your mind.
But on behalf of the City of West Covina and the City Council, it's pleased to recognize Darrell Myrick for receiving five gold medals from the 2012 National Police and Fire Olympics. Darrell, I've known you for many years, and you clearly are, even as you look at your body to this day, you're chiseled for a man of your age. You're in great shape, Frank. But it is truly a pleasure. I know you've done everything in this city. You're a hometown boy, and it's just great to see you do so well. Congratulations on behalf of the City of West Covina.
Thanks, my man.
We're going to let Darrell say a few words. Darrell's also the president of Covina Valley Unified School District, so we'll go ahead. Retired president, sorry.
Oh, thank you very much. I'd like to introduce my wife in the back, who allows me to do all the crazy stuff that I do, run all over the country doing triathlons and swim meets and stuff. Just a pleasure. It's a great place to grow up. It's been a great place to work and continue to work. It's my home, and I treat it as such. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Darrell.
Now, if we can have Lieutenant Tommy Garcia come down. I don't know where Tommy's hiding. There's something amazing before I even start talking about Tommy. You see a man of this size right here? I don't know how many years ago that was, but this man stood in front of me when we were playing basketball at a charity game and took a charge, and we thought we had killed him. I'm impressed that you endured all that, so that was impressive, Tommy. We'll go ahead and let Frank talk about your accomplishments, and I'll read your things. It's interesting. Lieutenant Garcia actually retired this previous July. We've had retirement parties for him. We presented these plaques previously, but we wanted to recognize him publicly. Tommy is really, he spent 32 years as a member of the West Covina Police Department, one of the most beloved members of our department, one of the most respected. He was with our nationally recognized SWAT team from its beginning, from its inception, until his retirement. He was the on-scene commander of some of the highest-profile incidents in the department's history. He's done, I can read a list of every place he's worked, he's done everything with the department. He served on a Governor's Blue Ribbon Post Committee to standardize SWAT practices across California. And he's another officer that practiced community policing. He decided he could live anywhere. He lived in the city, raised his wonderful children in the city. Is your wife here tonight? Oh, you can introduce her in a moment. But this is where he made his home, and he still makes his home in the city. And he is, we feel his loss to this day. I wish he was back, but he's enjoying retirement. And one thing I can say, you look at him here, he's retired after 32 years with the department. His first assignment with us was undercover in the high schools, posing as a high school student, by and don't, at Edgewood High School. A phenomenal athlete as well, played high school basketball, one of those all-league type players, and it's just one of those individuals that the city and you citizens, whether you realize it or not, you miss him, whether you know that or not. Just a great, great human being. Mayor. And that's some of this very important hardware, Tommy. This is so coveted. The city tile, I know you've been waiting to put this back on your wall because I know it's already been there. Lieutenant Tommy Garcia, appreciation of over 32 years of dedicated service to the City of West Covina. Congratulations for this coveted tile. I forgot which kid, because you guys all look the same. Which son did I go speak at the Treywood Junior High? How many years ago was that?
Sixteen now.
Oh, my God. I'm getting old myself. I think this is the chief's. West Covina Police, to Tommy Garcia, recognition of 32 years of honorable active service to the West Covina Police Department and the community exhibiting devotion to duty, loyalty, trustworthiness, and diligence in the performance of his duties as a police lieutenant. Award this 18th day of July, 2012. For 32 years of exemplary leadership, service, and dedication to the West Covina Police Department and the law enforcement profession, and service to the citizens of West Covina. Presented on your retirement from the West Covina Police Department, 18th day of July. And Tommy, this is from the City of West Covina, resolution commendation presented to Lieutenant Tommy Garcia for your 32 years of service. Tommy, also a longtime West Covina resident. Go ahead.
Well, I'm happy that it was Mayor Tui who gave this to me because we do go way back and we've had some great times together. If you didn't know it, he is a great, great basketball player. He was quick and a great shot. You might not believe it, but that's... I want to introduce my family that's here, my sister-in-law Pauline, my mom's here, Rose, who was with me since day one. I knew you were going to be with us. I mean, day one of the police. I hope it wasn't. My son Paul, who served two tours in Iraq with the army. Thomas, who's currently a police officer for the City of Glendale. Most important of all, Viv, my wife. She's been through me. She's been through 27 years of SWAT, is what I served on SWAT, 27 years. And all she asked was that after every call-out, is as soon as it was over, I called her so that she wouldn't see on the news what happened or if there was some disaster or something. Thanks for hanging in. Long haul. And I want to thank the chief. All my promotions other than corporal came through this chief. He had a lot of faith in me, and I'm glad he did. I gave him 32 of the best years I could give him. I want to thank all my fellow brothers and sisters, officers, and the people that worked at the department. All of you that are here, thank you so much. Obviously, you can't have a good career with not having good partners. You know, and I've had some great partners out there that have worked with me, whether it's narcotics and Dario and SWAT with Loco. All of you have worked with me one way or the other. I can tell you this, the City of West Covina has always been to the forefront. We've always been the big brother to all the San Gabriel Valley areas. And especially since I was part of the police department, if you didn't know, we have one of the oldest SWAT teams in the nation. It started in 1969, and since then, West Covina Police Department and the city has been nothing but innovative. We have several programs running throughout the state and this nation that started here in West Covina, and either the nation or the state decided it's the right way to do things. On one of our SWAT incidents, they actually made a video to distribute throughout the nation to show how to make decisions in a critical decision-making process. That's West Covina. You know, we're allowed, from the City Council, thank you so much, we're allowed the latitude to go beyond what's normal police work. Sometimes we're given the money, sometimes we're just given the permission, and we do it as we can do it. But my challenge to this city and to the City Council and City Management is to keep West Covina at the forefront of anything, everything. Let the officers do what they need to do to make you the best you can be in the city. The fire department is the same way. You know, they're innovative in a lot, lot of ways, and we just need to stay there, and I think looking at the way things are going, we will. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
If we can have our Assistant Fire Chief Bart Brewer, please come down.
Greg, can I have you come up first? This is retired fire Captain Greg Layton, hired in June, and we're glad to see him go. While he's coming up, I would like to say that Chief Sagala couldn't make it tonight. I want to apologize to the council and to the retirees as well. And he couldn't make it tonight, but that gives me the privilege to actually honor these guys that I got to work with for so long.
How you doing, Greg? Captain. City of West Covina would like to again give you, this is a very coveted tile. I know it's four of them today, but they're rarer than they may appear today. This is presented to Captain Greg Layton in appreciation of 29 years of dedicated service to the City of West Covina. Congratulations, Greg. This is also another award from the City of West Covina. The City Council is pleased to recognize Greg Layton for 29 years of public service to the fire department. Congratulations. Did you get that one, go?
Maybe one more.
I'm going to get in trouble for that. And the final one, our resolution. The City of West Covina is proud to give you a resolution commendation presented to Fire Captain Greg Layton for your 29 years of service. Once again, Greg, I've known you for many years, and you're going to be truly missed. Congratulations. You get to say a couple of words, sir.
Well, thank you very much. I appreciate everybody being here tonight and the honor. I wasn't expecting so many people to show up tonight, and this means a lot. I would like to introduce a few people, some family members that were able to make it. John Cloud and his wife, Mary. Many of you know them. John was a former officer here, obviously, and Mary was dispatch. Their children, Joel and Cole. And Kevin, Kevin couldn't be here tonight. He's ill, but we really think of him. I'd like to introduce my two sons, Kyle and Luke, and my wife, Loretta. Really, I want to really thank you so much for over the years. Our schedule, as you know, is a very difficult schedule for family and wives to live with. And it's been, you know, thanks for hanging in there all these years.
We're waiting for Dave to come up. There's a few things I wanted to say regarding from, about Greg Layton. I didn't get a chance to. Him and Chris Klein, one of our other retirees tonight, they came on one day apart. And I'm sure Greg never, Greg was hired one day before Chris, and I'm sure he never held that seniority over his head. But I was going to have them both come up at once, and that didn't work out. I was going to tell a story about the first time I ever met him. I was an auxiliary firefighter here, and I thought it'd be better with both of them there to see the height difference. But I'd never been on a fire department. I came here and I got dropped off in the middle of the night with a truck company to be on fire watch all night at a fire. And the first two firefighters I met were Greg Layton and Chris Klein. And I walked up, and they were like a foot and a half taller than me, and I thought, I have no future in the fire service. But I did want to say a few more things about Greg. I had a great time working with you. We got to spend the last several years together on the same shift. You worked so hard and did such a great job. You're a great captain, and we had the luxury of being fire investigators together as well as serving as SWAT medics on the SWAT team. And I just want to say Tommy Garcia was just an excellent leader, and what a dedicated group of guys that SWAT team is, and we just had a great time on it. Anyways, Greg, thank you very much. I'm going to miss you, man. Once again, I don't expect to see these tiles on eBay. This is very rare. Giving it to the wrong guy, then. David, it is our honor to give this to you in appreciation of your 27 years of service dedicated to the City of West Covina. I've known you also for so many years, and you've been a great firefighter, girl, also. So congratulations, Captain. Some more hardware to go on eBay. The City of West Covina and the City Council is pleased to recognize you once again, Dave, for over 27 years of service to the City of West Covina. Congratulations. The City of West Covina, resolution commendation presented to Fire Captain David Van Holset. Congratulations to your 27 years of service once again, sir. Now, you get to say a few words to talk about Bart.
I got nothing good to say about Bart. I got nothing good to say about Bart. It's just that I'm very thankful for the opportunities that the city and the department gave me, you know, the opportunities it gave my whole family, you know. And my kids aren't here with me tonight because one, I have twin boys that are 18, football practice tonight that they couldn't miss, and my daughters are off working and whatnot. But I have my beautiful wife Cindy here with me, and my mother-in-law Jerry and Cheryl, and my mom Bert and Ina there. And of course, they're a great support to me over my career, and, you know, just a small portion of the guys that I spent my career here with, I couldn't have done it without any of them. So thank you very much.
Chris Klein, can you come on down? Chris is making his way here. Just some more thoughts about Dave. If there was just a few funny stories I could think of to tell you that happened to Dave, it would be great, but I can't think of any right now. But Dave was known as the rookie basher, and when I came here in 1989, he had been here probably four or five years and was about ready to promote to engineer, and everyone took his side and said, watch out for the rookie basher, watch out for the rookie basher. And he was. And he probably couldn't get away with it nowadays, but back in the 80s, the hazing was a little more tolerated. And, but one thing he did do is when the new rookies came in, instilled, you know, work ethic and a sense that things had to be done right. And, you know, there was a place for it, and he made a lot of people around here better because of that. And he was an engineer forever, but he always wanted to be a captain, and he strived to be a captain. And in a small organization, it's very hard to promote sometimes. Sometimes you go years without a promotion at all. And I don't know how many tests he took, Dave, two, three? Twelve. But finally, three years before retirement, he realized his goal to be becoming a captain. I just wanted to take an extra second to congratulate you on that. It's a great accomplishment. You know everything about this, Chris. I want you to take care of it. The City of West Covina is proud to present this tile to fire engineer Christopher Klein in appreciation of 29 years of dedicated service to City of West Covina. Congratulations, Chris. Pat McGowan, can you get the camera ready?
Get the wide-angle shot.
Remember, Doug, you look like my brother. The City of West Covina and the City Council is pleased to recognize Christopher Klein for 29 years of service to the City of West Covina. Congratulations, Chris. And also, the City of West Covina is proud to do a resolution commendation presented to fire engineer Christopher Klein for 29 years of service. Congratulations. And you get to say a few words about any of the people that were disturbing you up there.
No, nothing bad. I want to thank the city for this stuff. This is pretty nice, and it's been a great place to make a career for 30 years and probably way better than I deserved or maybe any of us deserved to be able to work as a fireman here for so long. Things change in the fire department, and chiefs come and go, but the one thing that was consistent over almost 30 years, 29, nine and a half, whatever it was, is the guys, and that never changed. And that's, for me, that's what always made it worthwhile, the guys were, the guys here you see today in the last 29 years have been awesome, and that's what I'm going to remember, and that's what I'm going to miss. So, thanks, everybody.
Once again, if we can give a round of applause to all the recipients tonight. Just the past week, we recognized our hometown hero at the Los Angeles County Fair. That was picked by the Los Angeles County Fair Association. If we can have Jerry Curcio come down, our hometown hero for 2012. Jerry, it's just so great to honor you. I know you've been the president for the past six years at West Covina National Little League. You've been on the board for the past 10 years, and you're coming in to take over District 19 of Little League, which includes seven, approximately seven cities throughout our San Gabriel Valley. And it's such a great honor for you to achieve that status amongst your peers as presidents in Little League. And this, I know you've done everything in our city. You're a great volunteer, and I appreciate all the hours you've put in over the years. The City Council and the City of West Covina is pleased to recognize Jerry Curcio on being named Los Angeles County Fair's West Covina Hometown Hero. Congratulations. No, no, I know you hate talking. You tried to run.
Two weeks ago, when I received my award, I'd asked my best friend Glenn Kennedy, my brother, to please talk to the mayor and tell him, I don't want to speak. I don't want to say a word. want to say a word. I don't like the microphone. It's not my friend." Of course, you know what he did. He gave me the microphone, and again tonight. I want to thank, thank you, Mike, Steve, the rest of the council, for all that you guys do. If, if you, if you really knew how much these guys put into youth sports for our kids, you would be amazed, amazed. And I'm grateful. I'm truly grateful for you guys. Thank you very much. What an honor it is for me to receive this award tonight. I stand here alone, but I served with board members. And these board members made it possible to give the time that I gave. We do it for our kids, and their parents, and how, what an honor it is to serve them. The blessings come back to us. We get to see these kids grow, whether by making mistakes, achieving their goals, and just watching them excel. We, we, we love what we do. I want to thank my, my wife Sue. She's here. I don't think she remembered that we're married because I was never home.[678.23][678.23](Laughter) And she was probably, that was her blessing.[681.82][681.82](Laughter) But as I, as I go on to serve in the district, I look forward to serving other leagues, meeting their boards and presidents, and serving their children and their families. Again, I'd just like to say thank you guys very much.[701.73][701.73](Applause)
We drop down to oral communication. And our first speaker is Carolyn Arnt. Carolyn. And on deck is Pat and Norm Clemens. Sorry about that.[741.93][741.93](Laughter) How you doing?
My name is Carolyn Arnt. I'm delighted to be here. I'm a longtime resident, 57 years in West Covina. And I have in my hand the brief that our attorney filed that goes with the injunction that was filed on February the 21st. I am going to read the introduction. The introduction simply gives the history of the hill, and I want the citizens of West Covina to hear it. It's very well done. Drive east from LA on the San Bernardino freeway, and one spot will soon catch your eye, the West Covina Civic Center. It sticks out because it's so different from everything else. After monotonous miles of asphalt, concrete, glass, and steel, the mature forest surrounding and concealing the civic center, its man-made structure is an oasis of greenery in an urban landscape. The folks who live in West Covina are proud of it, and rightly so. But looks aren't everything. And this aesthetic attraction also serves a practical purpose. Two years after the freeway was finished, the community's forebears had the bright idea of creating artificial hill rocks to buffer the civic center from freeway noise. But rather than leave the hill rocks as piles of dirt, bare dirt, they had the further bright idea of beautifying them with landscaping and trees. Now, 50 years later, their vision has been fulfilled. And the trees on the Song Barrier berms have matured into an urban forest that is a local landmark. Ironically, the forest suburb freeway visibility is what threatens its existence. A few years ago, a developer tried to coach the city of West Covina into bulldozing the forest to make way for a massive office tower. The city council killed it in response to strong community opposition. But the location is just too enticing for developers to ignore. Last year, real party, party in interest, CMG Development, presented a four-story, 55,680 square foot version of the old plan to the city's planning commission, and the commission killed it too. However, CGM appealed that denial. And earlier this year, the council overturned it and approved the project's land use entitlement and property sale to CGM despite far greater outrage than last time. Community members then formed petitioner West Covina Improvement Association to bring this action against that approval. State law does not allow cities to hold fire sales on their property, even when a city is facing huge budget deficits and losses, and even if the developer generously supports the city's council's reelection campaign. The first court date is October the 31st at 9:00 a.m. before Judge Alan J. Goodman. And we are looking to resolve this issue. Copies of this brief are available to the public through the West Covina Improvement Association. Thank you very much.
Thank you. We have Pat and Norm next, from the League of Women Voters, I believe.
Yes, sir.
And Phil Marino is on deck. Phil?
First off, I want to tell you that Norm Clemens is, his grandfather was the first mayor of West Covina.
Benjamin Franklin Maxon, 1923, 1926.
And, so the family's still around. The Maxons are still here.
Uh huh.
Anyhow, I'm with the, I'm the voter service director with the League of Women Voters. And we have come to the city in the past and helped with the election process. And I'm here today because we are members of a, also of a group called CVOC, which is with the LA County Register of Voters. And we were, we meet with them monthly. And they gave us some late news about poll workers, and the fact that there is a shortage. And they named three cities in the San, East San Gabriel Valley, which they are having trouble getting poll workers. And one of them was West Covina. And we were very surprised to find this out. And they gave us a statistic that there are over 4 million voters. Let's see, let me get mine.
There are 4 million, 400, 490.
Almost 500, yeah.
4,490,000 registered voters.
And of those, 3,427.
Thousand.
Two million, or 3,427 and 248 go to the polls to vote. And they are short already 500 inspectors and thousands of poll workers. And we need to impress on West Covina that the poll workers will receive between $80 and $175 for working that day. And they also have training. And this form that I gave you, they can fill out and send in, or they can go to lavote.net and, on the internet, and apply that way. Also, we are going to be doing voter registration. And on the voter registration form, it asks if you would like to be a poll worker. So, we're stressing today that you, as councilmen and women, start talking to your people in West Covina, and tell them that this is one thing that is very highly needed, and we need to fill these positions in the West Covina area. And I just wanted to thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Last day to register is October 22nd.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Phil, and then Rob Fry, Fryhoff? Sorry.
Members of the council, members of the city staff, and members of the audience, as citizens of West Covina, today I have a question. I noticed that item number nine is involving tow contract extensions. And my question is, why do we have two different tow companies towing for the city of West Covina? The idea would be, through a competitive bid, you would like to get a return for that service for the city. So, do both tow companies pay the same amount of money back to the city? And I'd like the chief to comment on, is there a need for two separate tow companies? Now, the citizen should know. And I would personally, I understand at one time, we did have one tow company, one contract. So, what was the reason to go to a second one? So, if somebody can address that issue, I'd appreciate it.
Thank you very much, Phil. Rob, and then Ray Hernandez is next. Ray?
Hello. My name's Rob Fryhoff with Miracle Playground Sales. I'm here to address Agenda Number Two, the playground for Del Norte Park. Two months ago, city staff approached us to put together a match to another playground design. I believe it was in, just a due diligence to find the best value to the city. We went ahead and did that. We provided a apples-to-apples, which we feel was at least as durable and at least as much play value as the design that they were looking at. Turns out, in fact, that our equipment was less expensive. City staff did go ahead and, in public bid, bid out the project, listing both the alternate and miracle playgrounds. That bid result isn't, in fact, the lowest responsible bidder did, in fact, use miracle playgrounds. At this point, I believe city staff is still recommending the alternate. One of the main reasons cited in the agenda has to do with the, the alternate warranty. I would just like to make sure that city council understands, and the city staff understands, that that has been addressed. There was one line item between the two companies' warranties that dealt with the warranty term for a replacement part. That has been addressed in writing from the factory. Therefore, we would respect the request that the city council seriously consider alternative number three, which is to proceed with option B, which is the miracle playground option, and save the city $17,000. Thank you.
Thank you. Ray Hernandez, and Phil Kaufman is on deck. Phil?
Good evening, council members. Mayor Toohey. Well, here I go again. I will be talking about web streaming. Tonight, I'd like to go over a brief review, recap of operational cost comparisons in averages of three different regional cities, cities, which include annual maintenance, video streaming, and camera operator. You have copies of this, if you want to follow me. And I'm going to be very brief with this. Beginning with the city of Whittier, their total operational annual cost is $19,000, which includes one part-time camera operator, five cameras used, council and planning commissions broadcast. And then the next is city of Signal Hill, $21,005, which includes one part-time camera operator, three cameras used. They have no planning commission meeting broadcast. And then we go to city of West Covina, $22,450, which would include one part-time camera operator, three cameras forecast, city council, and planning commission. If you look at this, it's, you know, it's, it's an average of cost. And you can see that we're not that far off as far as operational cost. Now, I feel I have brought forward compelling evidence in the past, problem-solving solutions with no resolve from this council. Not one time has this council or staff member offered any plan of action. Tonight, I offer you another solution. Transfer the West Covina Discover to the West Covina web homepage. Go green. Go paperless. The savings of printing and mailing costs will cover the expense for a part-time, independent contractor-status camera operator. And I'm going to repeat, independent contractor-status operator. Additionally, use interns from Mount SAC, feel or avoid. Give students a learning experience while earning credit for their time, a positive civic activity the city can offer. The city of Walnut has success with this method. It saves their city many needed dollars. Mayor Toohey, tear down this wall. I challenge you to do the right thing for the residents. Place this item on the agenda. Direct staff to come up with solutions, not discouragements. I ask you, how can you continue the sound of silence and ignore the residents but not improve any substandard webcast while we have $381,800 in a PEG fund, the people's money, are available to make a professional improvement, while at the same time, 50 other regional cities can afford and are offering quality web streaming to their residents? Tonight, I ask you, is there anyone in this council courageous enough to break rank, and is willing to place on this item on the agenda to move forward? I await your leadership. Thank you.
Thank you, Ray. We have Phil next, and Alvino Larios, and Vanessa, sorry.
Mr. Mayor, council members, staff members, the day after the last council meeting, I received in the mail my bill from Athens Services. And when I opened it, I found three things that were of interest. First, at the bottom of the bill, there was a statement that your billing reflects an annual adjustment based on, upon the changing consumer price index and disposal costs. Next, I saw that the monthly charge for each of the three following months was higher than in the past. I figured, okay, they've raised the rates, and in the future, we'll be paying a little bit more money. But then I also saw a charge they called retroactive rate increase. And that caused me to wonder what right they might have to impose a retroactive rate increase. So, I looked at the West Covina-Athens Evergreen Contract in the billing section. And as I thought, in section 6.1 that covers billing, there's no mention of the right or anything about their ability to impose a retroactive rate increase. I ultimately found out independently from both Athens and from Barbara Bryle of the Public Works Department, that back in July, there was an approved rate increase, and that it was too late to have that on the last bill. So, the current bill imposes that rate increase for the coming months and for past month or so prior to, to that billing. I think this is very confusing, and the statement of a retroactive rate increase can cause a lot of concern about what Athens is actually doing. Also, in the, in section 6.1 of the Athens contract, I found something very interesting. I'd like to read the last couple of sentences of section 6.1. "The city manager shall have the right to request changes to the billing format to itemize certain appropriate charges, or to otherwise reasonably clarify the billing. The contractor will cooperate with the city to revise its billing format as necessary to itemize appropriate charges from time to time. However, once any billing format is approved by the city manager, if any future changes to the billing format result in substantial costs, those costs may be recovered by contractor pursuant to this agreement." I went to three different city departments, the city clerk's office, the public works department, and the city manager's office. And there's, no one could say that there's ever been a request by the city manager for Athens to modernize, improve, and clarify their billing. I think it's time that the city manager make that request, not just to remove ambiguous and actually incorrect statements such as retroactive rate increases, and rather delineate specifically the date of rate, when a rate increase is in effect, and the amount of that increase, but also, as I mentioned, the billing shows payments due for the next three months. Also, the city manager should request that Athens include on every bill sent to the city customers, the fact that they have a right to pay one month at a time, and do not have to pay three months in advance.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker is Alvino and Vanessa Larios. And on deck is Forrest Wilkins. Forrest?
Good evening, council. Good evening, Mayor. My name is Alvino Larios, and I'm the president of Innovative Playgrounds. Here just to, you know, shed some light on our design, and thank the city's staff for recommending our company, as well as our products for the Del Norte project. With me today is also Vanessa Larios, which is With me today is also Vanessa Larios, which is my executive administrator at Innovative Playgrounds, as well as my daughter when she's not working there. So I'm also going to let her start up because when I first came down and met with the staff, I obviously got all the information and took in what they wanted to achieve in this design and what they wanted to accomplish at Del Norte. And I went back and sat down with her, and we worked on a design, and she had a big input on what we were going to come back with and present to the city, so I'm going to allow her to talk a little bit on that as well.
Good evening. After Alvino came back from meeting with the city, he was very enthusiastic and very excited about the information and ideas that were shared with him for the plans for Del Norte Park. After listening to all of this feedback, myself and my staff and design team from the manufacturer were very excited to provide a unique and custom design with the ultimate goal to provide maximum imaginative play and to provide increased physical activity for children of all ages to, from the city of West Covina community of children to enjoy. And I also wanted to share a very impactful letter that our manufacturer wrote, just to kind of reiterate a little bit about our products and our services and what type of company we are. It's addressed to the city council. "Our goal as a company is now and always has been to put our best foot forward in all instances for all of our customers. It is for that reason that we publish the full content of our industry-leading warranty in our catalog and with every customer proposal. Simply stated, our product confidence is based on the fact that we use only the best quality processes and materials in making components such as our rationally molded, rotationally molded, plastic slides. While it costs us more to do so, our color-compounded plastic ingredients and UV-15 ultraviolet stabilizers ensure that our slides not only have excellent structural integrity, but also maintain their vibrant colors longer. With respect to customers in the area that Innovative Playgrounds and BCI Burke have served, we are proud of the fact that we have served and extended our standard warranty coverage to the following: city of South Almani, El Rancho USD, city of Azusa, Rio Hondo College, East Whittier City School District, city of Tustin, city of Fontana, city of Burbank, Room of the World USD, city of Port Huaynimi, and also government entity Miramar Marine Corps Base, and so on, just to name a few. Play value certainly can be subjective, and we would respectfully suggest that you consider our design from the standpoint of what you feel will best serve the children who will be playing on the equipment, as well as the parents and grandparents who will be there to enjoy watching them play. The bottom line is that we have been here to serve our customers' needs with the incomparable customer service, high-quality, innovative, safe playground equipment, and attention to detail that has been the cornerstone of our company for over 90 years. It would be our pleasure, in conjunction with Innovative Playgrounds, to serve your needs on this and other projects in the future. Sincerely, Brian Johnson, Director of Sales and Marketing." So just kind of in this packet that we've provided to you, we've included our warranty, which you see there as published as it is, and yes, it's 15 years on plastic, 100 years on steel posts, 15 years on decks, and as you can see, it is superior in the industry, and we stand behind it 100%.
That's 25 years on deck.
Oh, I'm sorry, 25 years on deck. I've also included some information about how Burke, in line with Innovative Playgrounds, is committed to a sustainable world. In doing so, we ensure that our world remains a safe and hospital environment for generations, and we do that by considering the way that we manufacture our products and the materials that we use. There's also some information about the product line that we've proposed to Del Norte Park, which is our nucleus system. It's a five-inch post system, and I invite you to read some of the facts and information regarding the material and product of it itself. And just a little bit, I'll have Alvino go over just a couple of points. And then in the last pages, we have a couple of reference letters that I invite you to read, especially the last one from city of South Almani, which really reiterates our products and our services and what we're all about.
Back just to the CoreConnect system, it really is a very unique system to Burke.
Excuse us, mayor, the speaker's either five minutes.
I'm sorry, we have a five-minute limit.
Thank you very much.
As be fair to everyone else. Thank you for your presentation. Forrest Wilkins and Lynn Lloyd Johnson. Lloyd?
Good evening, mayor, city council. I wasn't prepared to make a comment about Lieutenant Tommy Garcia. He's fully retired?
Yes.
He was here in a full uniform? He looked sharp, didn't he? Now, what was it, two years ago, you, mayor, Mayor Protem Shelley Sanderson, and Councilman Steve Hurford, didn't you pass a law making it a violation of law for any retired officer to enter the city council chambers being armed?
Lieutenant Tommy Garcia is a 960 employee. He is still employed by the city of West Covina.
So then he's not fully retired?
He's a retired employee, well...
He's retired from his previous position, but now he's still employed?
I believe that is correct. You'd have to ask our chief. Yes, he is.
Okay, I just want clarification of that. Anyway, I'd like to start off by saying that I have a compliment for Miguel in Public Works. Last December, I noticed a signal change phasing on southbound Azusa at Cortez. All of a sudden, it changed, and you were waiting there three, four minutes, if you're in the southbound left turn pocket. I called and talked to him. He said that there was some negotiations with the county and how they can make Azusa Avenue free-flowing and so forth. And we talked several times and several times, and nothing changed. And sometimes you're sitting in that left turn pocket, and no northbound traffic whatsoever, and you just sit there on the red light. Anyway, in the last two weeks, I've noticed there's been a change. Looks like it's back to the way it was, so traffic can flow better. So I'd like to compliment Miguel, even though it took eight or nine months. And then last city council meeting, there was a comment about the Brown Act, right? I find it very interesting, because I think it was, what, two, three years ago? There were four city council people after a city council meeting that went to a restaurant, and they all gathered together. Of course, we have no record of what the discussion was and so forth, but it appears that that could be a violation of the Brown Act. And of course, when we're in the public office, we will kind of want to avoid the appearance of something not being up and up. But I found it interesting how the Brown Act was thrown out last city council meeting. And then Athens, the Evergreen Contract. Now, correct me, Councilman Hurford, but the impression I got out of last council meeting is that basically there's no interest in even looking at the Evergreen Contract for the city council to look at it, as long as there's no one up here talking about it? That's the kind of impression I got out of your remarks. Is that kind of in the ballpark? So we need some more people coming up here talking about the Evergreen Contract? Well, I hadn't planned on, the previous speaker talked about Evergreen, or talked about Evergreen, but talked about Athens. And, you know, I've talked about it, and talked about it, and talked about it. And according to the 460 forms, in 2009, Michael Tuohy received $8,920 from the Athens Companies. Personally, you know, I have no problem with Athens giving a city council person $1,000. I think, you know, that's the way it is, but when they have several companies under the same banner, and they give you $8,920? And then in 2011, Steve Hurford received $8,000 from the Athens Group. And then in 2009, Shelley Sanderson received $13,390. Maybe this is, you know, some influence why people aren't receptive, why we should review the Evergreen Contract? Again, I want to emphasize, Athens made an offer to the city rose meet for $16 to pick up their trash. There was an article in the Tribune. It said that Consolidated was going to offer them basically the same services that Athens offers the city of West Covina. Here, we're paying $10 more a month. You know, we do have some senior citizens in our community that are on fixed incomes. Just take $10 a month, and you multiply that by 12, that's $120 a year. They would appreciate a reduction in their trash service. Thank you.
Thank you, Forrest. Lloyd Johnson is the next speaker. And so we do have senior rates that are 100% subsidized by the general rate payer and the business community. They subsidize the smaller cans out there. They don't pay their true cost of service. Go ahead, Lloyd.
That's okay. Good evening, mayor. I have two things I want to talk about. First of all, the one thing I want to talk about is the tow contract extension. I know we have two companies in West Covina. Bob's Towing does the south side, and Royal Coach does the north side. I don't know a lot about Bob's and what they do over on the south side, but I've seen Royal Coach in action. I've seen them when they're there doing the toes and stuff like this, and they're very professional. And they've been with our city for a lot of years, you know. I do not have a problem with the extensions, as long as Bob's and Royal Coach have the same contracts for each company and are paying the same percentage on their contracts, and the wordings are the same. Times are hard. I know we have one now that has a guarantee more than the other. If we're under extension, let's make it an even playing field. I know Royal Coach has met their obligation, but I don't think they should be bound by that wording. So I hope that I don't see a problem with the extensions, but I would like to see an even playing field. And the other thing I'm talking about, you know, a couple of meetings ago, I came up, and I mentioned about term limits for our council. With a three-year, four-year terms, and a $30,000 cap on each election. What I'm asking is this council to take a stand on this tonight. So tonight, what I'm asking is this council to have staff bring back a report, so this council can consider having it put on the November 2013 ballot, and let the residents decide. I would like an answer on that tonight. And by the way, these term limits will not affect the majority of this council. So I can't understand why this council wouldn't want to let the residents decide if they would like to have term limits for our council members. I hope you consider that. Thank you.
Thank you, Lloyd. Our next speaker, Bruce Leinbach, and Juan Reynoso on deck. Bruce?
Yeah, good evening, council. Honorable mayor. First of all, I'd say one thing. I've called different cities around the area, and a lot of times, I call the city manager's office. But I'll say, when you call West Covina city manager's office, you always feel welcome. My and the girls that work here, the staff, you always feel welcome, because a lot of times, they put you on hold, and you're like that. But with West Covina, you call in, and you have somebody talk to you, so it makes you feel good. I'm talking to Bank of America, and they left me on hold for a half an hour there. So invest in Bank of America. But what I want to say real quick is this. My son's girlfriend, Tracy, she was looking at the council meetings the other day, and she's, boy, these are substandard. I mean, that production, one camera, you can't see your speakers. What kind of flim-flam Mickey Mouse production is this? Right now, the biggest, we got the new TV back, the new cable, the internet broadcast, we have one camera. And it's had a, I don't know, we've had a lot of negative input from the citizens and everything like that. And when it's first presented to the city council, I mean, I said send it back, but I mean, the thing that bugs me, that nothing ever has been brought up by council members about how poor this program is that we have. And like I say, the cost, you know, did a survey, 50 cities around the area have multiple cameras. We're only one that has one. And the cost is not that much more. The big difference, when you have multiple cameras, you need one thing. You need a body. You call them the cameraman. And so the situation is, how do you pay for it? Most cities, some cities use staff, some cities hire part-time, some people use volunteers. But the point is this, there was never done, there was never any survey in a detail about these other options done by the staff. Also, the staff, they did a study of the city of Signal Hill, and they said their yearly is going to be $8,400 monthly, which is over $100,000. I call up the assistant city manager, monthly, that should be yearly. After redoing the figures, it came closer to $20,000, but here's the staff saying it's going to be $100,000, and they're still saying it's $100,000. Secondly, it seems like I have an idea about this part-time cameraman, and then bring up a point about five, can't have a fire, have somebody over five hours, because then we're going to have to bring a bunch of additional staff members in. First of all, because you have to have a half an hour break. So far this year, there's only been one meeting that's gone to 12 o'clock. Number two, whenever you have a meeting goes to 12, since I've been going to city council, you always generally always got a half-hour break. Number three, you can always put it on one camera at the end. So like I'm saying, it looks like they're always putting negatives in our, as far as this program goes, not positives. Don't think of it in a positive manner. Of course, a lot, I think the staff is reflecting the attitude of the council. The cost to get this internet broadcast is about $10,000 to $12,000 more. And what's most tragic is right now, we got $381,000 in reserves for improvements and cannot be used unless we expand our equipment and upgrade it, like bringing, we have to bring a cameraman in or whatever. But the point is this, all the other 50 cities, and I agree, there's financial stress in all you cities. All these other 50 cities have the same problem, but they go ahead, and they have it. Why can't we figure it out? Why can't we go out and ask these other 50 cities how they're doing it, and we can't? That's the thing that really upsets me. Now, I hear also, with West Covina Discover, they used to print it four times a year, now they're moving up to six times a year. So I assume the cost of printing the Discover is going to go up. And here we are, we're printing, spending more money for Discover or expanding it, but we aren't doing it for the cable TV, the internet. We should expand it, we should upgrade it. And like I say, we got $381,000 in reserves are sitting there. As for the citizens, it's not for the council, it's for the citizens. And I really want to urge, I really feel that we should have this under discussion, that the city council, either Mayor Tuohy, Mayor Protem Sanderson, Councilman Sykes, Satell, or Mr. Hurford, I think you should put this thing on agenda and let the people have their input, and make it more, the meetings more open to the public, so they feel like we're part of the city. Thank you.
Thank you, Bruce. Juan Reynoso and Maria Gutierrez is on deck. And then our last speaker will be Angel Correa.
Good evening, council members. Two meetings ago, there was a mention about a couple of walls where graffiti had been poorly eradicated. After some back and forth and finger pointing at the last council meeting, Mr. Tuohy, referencing the graffiti logging and tracking system the city contracts with, you stated, and I quote, "The last four years, our camera has never registered at that site." In addition to that, you made the following statement. Neither one of our, the current contractor or the previous contractor to the current contractor ever painted that wall," unquote. Finally, Chief Wills was brought down, where he stated, almost seven years ago, the homeowner himself, actually, the Chief Wills stated the following. "Almost seven years ago, the homeowner himself caught the graffiti vandal, and it was repainted over two graffiti contractors ago." I was the graffiti contractor then, so leave no one else. I just happened to be sitting there, minding my own business, when all of a sudden, I get this thrown in my lap, getting slammed, and I don't understand why. I'm here tonight for a couple of reasons. First, to set the record straight, from what I remember, the complaint, the original complaint was about mismatched walls throughout the city. Somehow, it became two walls, and then it became one wall. For the record, let me make it very clear. No one in my company ever touched either one of those walls, or did we leave any other mismatches when we finished our contract. That I guarantee you. What was failed to be disclosed was that the individual responsible for tagging that wall, tagging the wall in question, was tracked down by the property owner, whom the chief knows very well. We were not, we were asked, when we had the contract at the time, we were asked by staff not to do, not to service that wall, because the property owner was going to have the tagger remove it. That is the truth regarding this matter. It surprises me that staff and the chief, for that matter, have no clear recollection of what transpired. I'm sure the city staff could look back at every service log we provided and confirm that we never, ever serviced that wall. If the city has, no longer has those records, I have them all. So unless the city has concrete proof that my company, in fact, treated either one of those sites... sites, I ask for retraction to those statements. And insinuations made by both you and the chief regarding my company's service, I take that denigration of my company very seriously, and I don't appreciate it at all. Thank you.
Thank you, Juan. Maria Gutierrez. And then Angel is on deck. He is our last speaker.
Good evening, council members. I promised to make this very short. I would like to give you a lot of information and details and rates and backup information regarding the Athens contract, but I think Mr. Kaufman and Mr. Wilkins have been exceptional information that I don't think I can give you anymore. My one thing here is basically, Mr. Hurford, during the last council meeting, you did say that if enough residents came up and asked you to please question, put some question into the contract, you would. And I here as a resident am formally asking you, please put some question into it. You say that you take care of us and all the residents, then at this point, not only you, but every other council member here should take to heart that we are telling you, we are paying more than we need to. Why are we? And no one at this council has yet to do anything about it. I don't understand why this keeps falling on deaf ears. Mr. Wilkins comes in constantly with incredible amount of information that I couldn't even put together even if I wanted to. Until this date, no one has put that into question. Another issue that comes in is regarding the video. Why is that still an issue? You guys are here to represent us, to take care of us. And Mr. Toohey, we don't have to be senior citizens to get good rates. We are regular residents who are still paying more than we have to. I opened my bill, I've been here over the past 15 years, I've opened my bill and progressively seen it increase. And then as the information comes out, we come to realize that, hey, we're paying far more than we need to. So it's just a very simple request. And if you ladies and gentlemen really care for us the way you say you do, then why isn't it immediately, rather than sitting after everybody comes up and talks, come up with a bunch of information and facts and this and that, it doesn't take away from the fact that we're still paying more than we have to. And there is absolutely no reason or no excuse why we still are. Regardless who Athens is to each and one of you individually, that's not my business and I don't care. All I know is that I'm paying more than I have to and I shouldn't. All I know is that videos keep being displayed that really have no business being displayed the way they are because supposedly we're such a great city and we're an example. Well, how the heck can we be an example? We can't even show our residents proper video footage of what's going on. So please, all I ask, don't sit there after I sit down and give me all these reasons and excuses why not, but actually put staff to work, have them look into this. Because enough residents are getting frustrated. And if you think that one recall is not possible, it can happen again. And really, we don't need to get to those points to get you guys to listen. It should be something that should come out of you guys. I know very well when each and one of you came up and said you wanted to be council members, your intentions were to do something. Well, then something has changed over the years. I don't know what it is. Did you guys become politicians and you stopped becoming residents of this city? That's probably what happened. Please, do what we as residents are asking you. Look into something that is affecting us. $120 a year is a lot to pay if we don't have to. Bad video footage is something we don't need to tolerate if we shouldn't have to. So I ask you, I plead with you, do something about this. Mr. Wilkins shouldn't have to come up here repeatedly and ask you guys to look into something, pull out contracts, give you facts. You guys help run this city. You guys should know better than he. Again, all I ask, no fancy words, no fancy backups, just some actions. Thank you.
Thank you. Our last speaker is Angel.
Good evening, Mayor and council. Thank you for allowing me to speak this evening. Here on behalf of a good friend, Alvino Larios, part of Innovative Playground, you have an agenda item before you, agenda item number two regarding playground improvements at Del Norte Park. And I'll let you, you know, deliberate and discuss that as you, as you will and as you wish. And all I'm here to say this evening is that we've used Innovative Playground and the Burke equipment in the city of Azusa for some time. Everybody's been very happy, our entire staff, residents. The equipment holds up well. The company is a pleasure to deal with, and I know that they're, you know, a company that stands in good, in good favor with the community and behind their products. So again, I just wanted to come out and speak in support of Innovative Playground and Mr. Larios. So thank you for the opportunity to speak this evening and have a great evening.
Thank you, Your Honor. Okay, that's the end of close, or the end of oral communication. Do we have any questions? Mayor Protim Sanderson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, everyone, for coming this evening. I just had a couple of comments in reference to the residents coming forward to speak, and I think this is how we can communicate. And also, let me remind the residents that we can also communicate by a phone call to city manager's office. I'd be more than glad to meet with anybody that shall, would like to meet on any subject matter. I wanted to, there were some speakers here earlier, but I think they've left, in reference to the poll workers. I didn't know if that is something that Mr. City Manager, that maybe we could add to the Discover for just saying, "There's an interest, here's the phone number." And I want to kind of briefly touch on the Discover, is we get a lot of compliments on our Discover. We have a lot of residents really appreciating that. Comments were made earlier that we, you know, should get rid of it, and I think it's a very important tool to continue to communicate with, with the people. And we want to keep that visibility and that communication with, with everybody. So I wanted to make sure to see if that's something that we could do. And a couple of other items briefly, just from my seat. I did ask for a brief report on our video. Chris Freeland had done a brief report talking about the different cameras, different options that we really are pretty much using, what other companies were using. So if anybody would like to meet on that agenda item, please call the city manager's office at 626-939-8401, and I would, we'd more than glad to get back with you. Also, too, it's difficult when people do come up to the DIAS saying, "We want you to fix this, we want you to fix that." There are things that we only, we can only do minimal, brief comments because we obviously don't want to violate any laws that we do have to adhere to. So I wanted to make a comment on the video that if anybody would like to meet on that, as well as the Athens contract that a few residents came up and talked about. We have, over the years since I've been on council, we've had that come up several times. We've had, it's gone out to bid and we looked at different items, and so I would be more than glad to meet with somebody on that. I know a resident expressed it was kind of confusing. I would love to, to go over that with you and also just some of the misinformation that, that does go out on that end. I would just like to make clear of that. So I'm just encouraging residents to get involved and to call the council. And there was somebody that mentioned something about a signal light on Azusa. I'd never heard of that, and I'll tell you, call a council member, call city manager's office if you have a problem with a signal or a street or a tree, and they're amazing about getting it taken care of. And if you can't, call one of us, and, and we will contact them if it gets lost, and sometimes things get lost. So I was kind of surprised to hear that because any time a resident contacted me about a tree or a camera or, or not camera, a light, a signal light, Shannon Yahtzee is amazing and they get on it right away. So again, if you have any problems, please, you know, that's, you know, we're here to try and help you if we can. Thank you.
Thank you. If I see no other comments, the one thing I want to add, a resident brought up, two of our, well, two of the officers here are retired, but they still do work for us. I want to make sure, our assistant police chief, Darryl Myrick, is part of our reserve officer program, and I believe he heads that up. I'm not sure his, his exact title. But they are both working members of our police department. Still to this date, they have retired, but one is, I think, off of the 960 program and working as a reserve officer for this city, and the other one is finishing up his reserve hours or his 960 hours. So if you understand that, when you retire, you're allowed to work 960 hours maximum a year after you retire by law, under by the state of California. Our city manager is on that program as we speak. Similar. The tow bid, similar, they mentioned the tow. We had three tow operators, so the people understand the history. We reduced it down to two tow operators. That was Royal Coaches and I believe Budget Towing. Budget Towing had a financial collapse. That's why we went down to one temporarily. One tow operator absorbed the other contract till the contract ended. And then we restored it back to two operators at had been the past. If you remember, we used to have the Suras, Blackards, I forgot the other one, was it a, I forgot the third operator back then. But we had three operators at a time in the city of West Covina. It was reduced down to two. That has been the standard for almost the past 15 years. In the city, there was a question raised on the contract, and I know it's coming up later on. Was the information provided in the bid package or after the close of bids? Someone mentioned that they, they changed their warranty. One of the people that spoke, was that at the submission of bid or after the bids were opened and they sent it later on? I just need that question answered so I understand that clarification. And I believe, maybe I'm incorrect, but I believe they may have, that person speaking on the wall, the graffiti on the walls, I believe also mentioned that one, from what I understand, with phone calls with our chief, the one that was directly across the street from her home also. It may not have been the only thing in her, her comments, but that was one of the walls in question, and that's why that question was asked. If there's no other questions, we can drop down to, or is there anything staff wants to add? We can drop down to consent calendar?
Motion to approve.
On the consent calendar, since I have a, an indirect lease with AT&amp;T at my dairy property I own, I cannot, I will abstain on item number three due to conflict of interest laws?
Mr. City Attorney, do I need to amend my motion to move the consent with his abstention?
The record will reflect the extension on that item.
I have a motion. Did I get a second?
I second it.
Then second it. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Okay. Drop down to item number five, public hearing. I did not see that in my, oh, yes, it is. Yes.
Did you want a response on that one question regarding the, you asked about the warranty?
Yes, what?
I was going to have Mr. Yahtzee just respond to your question, if you still want.
No problem. Thank you. As far as the warranties on the products, I did personally review the warranty sheets that were submitted with the bids, and that's what we're going by. And they're both very good products, and we would be well-served with either product. The innovative product does meet or in some places exceed the miracle warranty, and so that's what our comments were based on.
Thank you. Drop down to item number five. This matter set for public hearing is the consideration of proposed amendments to the fiscal year 2012, 2013 Community Development Block Grant Action Plan. Will the city clerk verify that proper legal notice has been given?
Yes, that's verified.
At this time, I shall open the public hearing on the proposed amendments to the fiscal year 2012, 2013 Community Development Block Grant Action Plan. There will first be the presentation of the staff report, then we shall hear comments from the public. Mr. Pazman, who will present the staff report?
Mr. McDonald will do that report.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of the city council. This hearing concerns proposed amendments to the 2012, 2013 CDBG Action Plan. There are 20 proposed amendments, and they are detailed in attachment one. Because the approval of the annual action plan generally precedes the, the adoption of the city's budget, subsequent action plan amendments are typically needed to make the two documents consistent, and that's the purpose of tonight's hearing. The proposed amendments concern activities and funding amounts that were included in the city's adopted 2012, 2013 budget. And while the improvement of these amendments does not require an additional appropriation, it is necessary to formally include them in the action plan. Therefore, staff recommends the city council approve the proposed amendments to the 2012, 2013 CDBG Action Plan as detailed in attachment one. That concludes my report.
Any questions? Council has of staff?
Mr. McDonald, on your report, were the innings you didn't fund or did you fund all your projects? Before, I remember you used to see all the projects, and then once, now these are just the ones you're funding. Did you have to turn any away this year or what?
Um, no, we, there were, there was one that declined to move forward and, and, no, they were all, they were all funded, and that's the reason for these interest, these cents numbers is because there was a pro rata thing done with the, with the allocation of the funds, the recommendation from the commissions that came forward.
Okay, thank you. Any other council comments? Is there any member of the public wishing to comment on this item? Seeing none, I shall now close the public comment portion of this hearing and ask for council discussion or a motion is in order to approve the proposed amendment to the fiscal year 2012, 2013 Community Development Block Grant Action Plan if there's no comments.
So move.
Second.
Then moved and seconded. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Passes 5-0. Drop down to public hearing number six, the 2012 Congestion Management Program Conformance, Self-Certification and Local Development Report. This matter set for public hearing consists of finding of the city, consists of finding the city to be in conformance with the congestion management program and the adopting the congestion management program local development report. Will the city clerk verify that proper legal notice has been given?
That's verified.
At this time, I shall open the public hearing on the 2012 Congestion Management Program and the Local Development Report. There will first be the presentation of the staff report, then we shall hear from those in favor of the proposal, then those opposed. Finally, those in favor have an opportunity to give rebuttal to any testimony received in opposition. Mr. Pazman, who will present the staff report?
Mr. Anderson will do that report, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, thank you. This is the congestion management plan. As part of the congestion management program, the city of West Covina is required to annually submit statistics on development activity to the MTA. The reporting form is, is attachment two in your report, and in that report, it indicates that the amount of demolition and construction activity from June 2011 through May 2012. Just in summary, permits were issued for two new single-family houses over that time period, Chase Bank Building on Azusa, 76th Gas Station on Pacific, and a McDonald's on Valley. Staff is recommending approval of the attached resolution. That concludes the presentation.
Is there any questions of the staff, any council member? Seeing none, is there anyone wishes, wishes, is there anyone who wishes to speak in favor of this? Anyone opposed? I shall now close the public testimony portion of this public hearing and ask for council discussion or a more, motion is in order to adopt the resolution if there's no discussion.
So move.
Can I have a heading to the resolution?
That's resolution number 201278, a resolution of the city council of the city of West Covina, California, binding the city to be in conformance with the congestion management program and adopting the CMP local development report in accordance with California Government Code Section 65089.
Motion?
Motion approved. Second.
Okay. You got that motion in a second? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. We drop down to public hearing number seven, the first reading of the Sewer System Overflow Prevention Ordinance. One of those great state laws. This matter set for public hearing on the sewer overflow prevention ordinance. Will the city clerk verify that proper legal notice has been given?
Yes, that's verified.
At this time, I shall open the public hearing of the Sewer Overflow Prevention Ordinance. There will first be the presentation of the staff report, then we shall hear comments from the public. Mr. City Manager, who will present the staff report?
That'll be Mr. Yahtzee.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor Toohey, members of the city council. The state water board has recently adopted regulations that
The State Water Board has recently adopted regulations that require all cities to pass ordinances that would prevent and reduce fats, oils, and grease, otherwise known as fog, from going into our sewers. Fats, oils, and grease, or fog, can clog the city sewers and lead to overflows. When the sewer overflows, it can go into the storm drain, which ultimately leads to rivers and oceans. If this happens, the city can be fined tens or hundreds of thousands of dollars. Obviously, raw sewage contains bacteria, something that we don't want in our rivers and oceans, so we do want to support this. Grease traps installed in restaurants and other grease-producing facilities can be used to help eliminate or reduce the amount of fog that goes to the sewers. So this ordinance will do several things. Mainly, it will require grease traps in all new businesses or restaurants that do create fats, oils, and grease to prevent them from going into the sewers. And it would also require grease traps in existing restaurants that perform substantial remodels or additions. Also, the ordinance also allows city staff to perform site visits on the businesses to make sure that they're implementing best management practices and also regularly cleaning and maintaining the grease traps. With that, I'll ask if there's any questions.
If no one has questions, Shannon, it mentions a potential fee in here, and maybe I missed it because I was concentrating on other portions of this report that I have deep concerns on. What is the suggested fee?
Currently, we're not suggesting any new fees. The staff report does outline where most of the programs are covered by existing fees, permit and plan check fees for the installation of new grease interceptors, and there is already an NPDS site visit fee that can be used if inspections are required for businesses to make sure they're maintaining these grease traps.
So they can this, when we had this problem with our weed abatement fee, they can just come on their own and you owe money without any complaint? And the business therefore sent a bill?
No, normally would only do it if there's a problem in the area or there's complaints against the businesses related to grease or fats.
You use the word normally, so that means you, the Los Angeles County Weed Abatement, if they've ever looked at your property ever in the past, they charge you $254 a year there forward, no matter what, whether you've taken care of your problem or not, you're permanently on their thing and you owe them money. Is that what this is?
This, at this point, is not a regular inspection program. However, with the upcoming adoption of the state NPDS permit, that new permit could and may likely require that the city conduct those regular inspections as they had in the past. That would be state mandated.
And this said also, and that we can go through current operating businesses and require them to take out their garbage disposals?
If, if there's a problem that we find that relates to them putting grease oil and fats down their garbage disposals that are leading to repeated clogs of the sewers that then cause overflows, the city can take that action.
And so the council and the public understands my concerns. This has already started in the city of Covina. Alpha Omega Burger had to spend $12,000 to put in a grease system. It's absolutely going to crush the business community. Trace Vino is the other restaurant, the Cuban Restaurant, had to spend over $30,000 to comply to this ordinance. So this has the potential to, to absolutely eliminate small businesses, but it's a state of California ordinance, one of those ones where we have very little say in this, but it is crushing to the individual small business person that has to try to comply. There's no other questions? We'll drop down to... Madam City Clerk, have you received any written protests, objections, or comments concerning this?
No comments received.
I was reading the wrong one for the Sewer Overflow Prevention Ordinance. Okay, if there's been no comments received, if there's anyone present who wishes to comment on this item? You, it will be first Lloyd, then Phil, but you have to do it at the microphone. Lloyd?
Thank you, Mayor. I just have a question about how some of this is going to be enforced, because my question is that I walk by the In-N-Out over there on San Bernardino Road every day, you know, and I, even though that's a drive-through, you know, you still get a lot of grease and oil and stuff. People go after hamburgers and stuff, all that. Once in a while, I watch them while they're washing it down and stuff like, they have a vacuum right there that sucks all the stuff up before it goes into the drain, and the other times I go by, they don't, and they're all washing right down into the gutter, right into the sewer line. So I've been wondering if we have something like this, how will we do the part for the drive-throughs? So if there's, when they're doing the washing down the driveways and stuff like that, to keep all that from going into the sewers, we make it mandatory that they have these big, a vacuum. It's not a big deal. If they have a vacuum right where the sewer goes down, they can keep all this from going down in the ground. That's my main concern, because I see it happening all the time.
Thank you. We'll see if they can answer that question. Phil?
This question is for Mr. Yatsi. You can establish an ordinance. We have, how many code enforcement officers in the city? And is, are we supposed to enforce this ordinance from the state? And if so, I mean, who's going to do it here at the city?
I think that's some of the things we discuss with all of our residents all the time, unfunded mandates, that we don't have the personnel to enforce this law, but we can get fined a ton of money if we don't. That's our problem, to try to find how we're going to find the money to pay for it. That's, the state of California does it on another one. Another thing we had in closed session earlier was on our storm drains, or sewers. Are those sewers?
Storm drains.
NP?
Storm drains.
Storm drains. That was in our closed session where we have the potential, an expense of eight to $15 million a year over a new state water regulation to make sure, same way we're treating the water that runs off your house in the streets. It's just, it's impossible for the city to collect all that water and treat it, but we're going to be held accountable by the state of California. Mr. Yatsi?
And yeah, that's correct. We do currently have one code enforcement officer, and that is why the cities really, all the cities see this as an unfunded mandate by the state. To answer Lloyd's question, this is a little bit of a different ordinance because it covers grease that's being put directly into the sanitary sewer. The current state and federal laws already prohibit businesses from washing grease and pollutants directly into the street, which would go directly into the storm drain, and that would be something you'd want to call and report to us, and we try to go and educate the business managers and let them know that there's practices they need to follow.
Thank you. That's why you're not technically supposed to wash your car at home, because you're using non-biodegradable soap and you wash it down in the storm drain. You actually put us in a potential violation of our storm drain permits. Good answer. Okay. If there's no other comments, I shall now close the public comment portion of this hearing and ask for council discussion. Is there any other council discussion on this? Do I have a motion of this terrible new bill we have to do?
Motion to introduce.
Second. Moved and seconded, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Drop down to public hearing number eight, Standard Specification for Public Works Construction 2012 Edition Ordinance Introduction. This matter set for public hearing is the adoption of the Standard Specifications for Public Works Construction 2012 Edition. Will the city clerk verify that proper legal notice has been given?
That's verified.
At this time, I shall open up the public hearing on the adoption of Standards Specifications, for Public Works Construction 2012 Edition. There will first be the presentation of the staff report, then we shall hear comments from the public. Mr. City Manager, who will present the staff report?
Mr. Yatsi will do this report as well.
Shannon?
Thank you again, Mayor, members of the city council. The Public Works Standard Specifications, also known as the Green Book, is updated three years. These specifications cover construction materials, testing, and requirements for all of the construction in the streets right of way, paving, backfilling excavation, sidewalk construction, striping, and those type of things. As I said, it's updated every three years, and it is really a benefit to the city developers and builders to have all of the cities in California adopt and use these uniform specifications. And with that, I'll ask if there's any questions.
Does council have any questions of staff? Madam City Clerk, have we received any written protests, objections, or comments?
No comments received.
Is there anyone present who wishes to comment on this item? I shall now close the public comment portion of this hearing and ask for city council discussion. There's no discussion, there are a motion is in order for the following ordinance?
I'll second that.
Okay. Motion and second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Was that a aye, Fred? I'm sorry. I'm sorry, Bob. Okay, we drop down to item number nine, City Manager's Office Tow Contract Extension. Mr. Pasman.
Mr. Franklin, do you want to go ahead and present that report?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council. In June 2009, the city council approved an exclusive franchise to the city's current tow service contract with Royal Coaches and Bob's Towing. Royal Coaches provides tow service in Area 1 of the community while Bob's tow services Area 2 of our community. Attached to your staff report is a highlight of those two service areas. City staff has received an unsolicited joint proposal from Royal Coaches and Bob's Towing seeking a contract extension that allow them to amortize the cost of new environmentally friendly tow vehicles over a longer period of time. Currently, the city's agreement with both tow companies expires on July 1, 2014, but can be extended by mutual consent of the city and tow companies up to an additional five years, which would extend the contract through July 1, 2019. The proposal submitted by the two tow companies is as follows. Tow companies agreed to a franchise fee of 30% of gross revenue. Tow companies are requesting a contract extension beginning on October 1, 2012, of seven years or up to an additional 10 years. That would put the contract through either October 1, 2019, or October 1, 2022. The addenda that you received, your council agenda, included information regarding both tow companies in the sense that, under the current contract, Royal Coaches, in addition to the 30% of gross revenues that they are contributing, they also contributed 1.5% of gross revenue that goes to the West Covina Community Services Foundation to help fund community events. Bob's Towing, as part of their proposal, is, has indicated that they too would be adding the 1.5% towards the West Covina Community Services Foundation. Between the two tow companies, the city generates a revenue of about $192,000 from those revenues. And at that time, excuse me, at this time, I submit this report, I have answered any questions either by myself or the police chief who's here as well.
Does council have any questions of our assistant, or deputy city manager? Thank you. Do we have any council debate on the city, this issue? Yeah, council member Fred Sykes?
A citizen had some questions for the chief. So if we could please have the chief...
No problem. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor, members of council. I was handling some other business up there, and so I didn't hear all the questions, but the one I do recall is, do we really need two? Now, obviously, that's a public policy decision for the city council to make. Two has worked well for us, and historically, the feeling of the city is, competition breeds performance and increased efficiency, and it's worked well for a number of years, and we haven't had any complaints in doing that, and that's the reason we have two. I mean, you can always debate whether we need one, two, or add two more and have four, but having two tow companies has, has worked well for many decades in the city of West Covina, and it's been a good system for us.
Go ahead.
Chief, from your experience, regarding the one, do we need, and two, when you had the cooperation and interaction, when there was only one, compared to now that there are two, would it be more efficient for the department paperwork-wise, time-wise, to work with one versus having two? From your experience, if you remember, you did have, we did have one for a while.
Right.
And now you have two, so I'm asking you to compare, do you think there's some efficiency that we could do with one versus having two?
Well, we had one for a fairly short period of time, and that was Royal Coaches, and we had tremendous success. It worked out very well for us. Whether one is more efficient than the other, even officers on that department, my own management team, would have different opinions. But I don't know that it was more efficient with one than with two, or more efficient with two than with one. It's very close. And certainly, you know, the comfort that we have with it, it's important that our officers can get up to a tow lot quickly and that it's secure, and, you know, it's another measure to decide which generates the most revenue for the city. That's another metric that, again, is a public policy decision, but just in terms of our operational use from rank-and-file police officers who use those services every day, I don't think that one is more efficient than the other that we've noted.
So if I understand you correctly, at the time when you only had one, and paperwork, so on and so forth, you don't, you haven't picked up a difference now that you have an additional with two versus the one?
Not significant. Not significant. I mean, you can, there's pros and cons with both, and again, there's not a standard professionally accepted practice in this area. You know, the CHP, everybody that qualifies, Baldwin Park CHP, every tow company that qualifies, and they rotate among many different tow companies. Some cities feel that one is best, some cities have two, three, or four, and again, there's not a generally accepted professional standard. It's the duties you impose on your tow contractors, it's what the city's asking of the tow contractors, and, and again, it's hard to say because those, those requirements and some of the specifications from the state of California change with each bid, so it's hard to compare two contracts ago with one contract ago with our current contract.
So in plain English, having one was not going to help you, not going to make you more efficient?
Not that we noted, no.
Thank you, sir.
Is there any other comments? Or do people want to make comments, or what they're looking at?
Mr. Mayor, first off, let me say I think both of our tow companies do an excellent job in the last two-plus years. I haven't had any complaints directed to me on the council. Revenue streams are important to the city. This $190,000 is important to the general fund of the city, and I have no problem with extending the contracts. I'd like to make a motion to have the tow truck companies extend their contracts to October 1, 2022, to agree to a 30% franchise fee and to 1.5% of gross revenue being contributed to the West Covina Community Services Foundation.
I will second it for debate. Is there any other comments any council member wishes to make? Seeing none, I'll go ahead and go ahead.
Mayor, just this one, just to say that we noticed that Royal Coaches have given more, and I think that should be commended. And I'm hoping that going forward, that we will make sure that both step up and give. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Just in fairness, I need to make sure that they gave more because they got more tow, number one, and they paid a lower percentage. So I'm saying, we're trying to, I think that was a mistake in the previous contract, and I voiced it then, that it should have been fair to have both of them, they should have paid a similar amount, and that's what I like about this particular contract. One paid 30% plus 1.5%, the other contractor paid 34%. That, to me, wasn't fair at that time, and I still voiced my concern then, not having standard. I think both are fantastic operators, and I think it's better to be consistent like this, and I understand contrary, and I know sometimes there's comments said about contracts, you can either be driving a... can either be driving a tow truck that needs a tow truck to get to the scene, or you can give people contracts long enough and to buy the most modern type equipment that they can finance it, because that's the key to all these new environmentally friendly handicap type vehicles you have to have. It's just not a matter of, you get a one-year contract, and then you have to go out and try to spend $150,000 on brand-new rigs each one. It's just not financially feasible. So I think this is fantastic opportunity to go with our two operators we have, standardize the process for them. To me, it makes it more equal for both of them going forward. And like I said, I think they both have done a commendable job. I know they're both very involved in our community, so I wanna thank both the operators who are here today for that, even though one brought more people than the other. They brought the most important person, Bill's wife. Bill and Jim, you don't matter much, sorry. But I think it's great. So we have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Mr. Mayor? I'm sorry, sorry to interrupt, Mr. Mayor. One request that I have on clarification of the motion is whether the motion is to instruct the city manager to go ahead and execute contracts pursuant to those terms, or to come back to council with a contract for council to review before it goes into effect?
My, my motion was to go ahead and have the city manager execute the contracts, under those terms.
And I would, that is my understanding of the second. That's normally what our city manager does. Okay, if I have no other comments, a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Passes 5-0. Congratulations both to Royal Coaches and Bob's Towing. We drop down to mayor's, council members' reports. Is there any member of the council wishing to make a report? AB 1234 reports, is there any council member needing to make a AB 1234 report? Is there any council member requests for reports, studies, or investigations? Is there any council member comments? There we go. I know Fred had that finger ready to go, so I was waiting to find out which one he was jumping at. Councilmember Sykes.
Well, we'll start with Athens, since it starts with A. We have, for years now, we've been asking, and so, you know, I'm gonna ask again with the people who came tonight to try to get support on the, on at least the review, to re-review the, in particular, the evergreen portion of the contract. I think you know from 2007, my position on this, and it would be nice to get my fellow council members to consider what was said tonight regarding the, what we feel are unnecessary costs that we incur for this service, mainly because we have no open bid. We don't get an opportunity to find out what's actually out there. Right now, all we know is that, from what we hear, the, the contract is not the best that we can get. And the same thing, I'm asking for support for the end engagement of the broadcast, and that we have a gentleman who volunteers, and in some ways, his broadcast is superior to what we have. We have a lot more funds than he has. So I just don't see how we can, allowed us to, to continue without a, without a thorough review of how we can improve. There are some options, I know. Again, it's about where there's a will, there's a way. And if we could examine, for instance, staggering the hours for volunteers. I know that we have to make accommodations and so forth, but we can see how Walnut, for instance, is able to get Mount SAC to participate. And I know that there are options that, if we explore them, we should be able to bring it up to we can, whereby we can get at least one, if not two, additional cameras. So I'm just asking for that support. Thank you.
Mayor Protem Sanderson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just had a quick question for the city manager, if you do have the answer. I believe in the contract, and this is in reference to Athens, is there legal parameters where you can actually look into something or not, given a timeframe?
I'm not sure I'm following your question.
How can you reopen something if it's not up yet? I thought there was dates. I'm just questioning that. Maybe you can get back to me on that.
Yeah, I'd have to get back to you. I'm not sure.
Yeah, I'm sure you don't have that.
I don't believe there is anything in there, but I'm not sure.
Yeah, okay. That was it. Thank you.
Go ahead. Councilmember Satello?
I would also like to look at the webcasting and see what we can do. We were supposed to have a, supposed to have an agenda, as I thought, and we were supposed to go back and then and see what's going on with the webcasting. We bring it up every week, every month, I mean, every meeting week comes up. If we can do it to make it a little bit better, myself, you see a picture, you hear what's going on. I don't think you need to see somebody's face. I just don't have to be like it was before with the seven different cameras. But if we can make it a little bit better for our people, why can't we look into it? Thank you.
Mayor Protem Sanderson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Chris, you had done a report. Did that go to all the council?
Well, I know that we've done some weekly reports on the measure, and that's, with regards to the operations, the cable operations here and the personnel, the issue's been that there would be a general fund cost in order to staff it. The discussion about upgrading the equipment here has not been an issue that we could, that we need to worry about, because the members of the community are correct that we do have the PEG funding, which can be utilized to upgrade cameras if we needed to. The issue is, we still need to fund the personnel to actually operate those cameras.
Right. And I know you had done a report that talked about what the other cities that some of the people have brought forward and what their cameras, and they're the same equipment. It's just that they had operators.
That's correct.
So, I mean, I guess this, to me, this is kinda going around and around and around in a circle, and I'd really like to put some closure to it, and so maybe you could suggest how we can do that. Because I, you know, I agree, you know, you, we have televised, you can hear what's going on, and I think that's, you know, great. We obviously want to communicate, but the, you know, same couple of residents keep coming, meeting after meeting, and they're concerned with the quality of the, of the cameras. We, as a council, have to make decisions on finances, obviously, because we did have a balanced budget, and we wanna make sure we continue to do that. And these are the type of things we wanna make sure. So I'm just, you know, I guess, I don't know what everybody wants to do, but it just seems like we're, you know, kinda doing what we can financially, so.
If I can just give you a brief recap, and that is, that the, when you compare the other cities that have been brought up by members of the public, our wide-angle shot exactly the same as their wide-angle shots. The difference is that they hire staff or have personnel to operate those cameras so that they can zoom in on the speakers who are speaking, council members, the city staff, or members of the community that are sitting in the audience. That's the difference. Or they have a little tag lined below each speaker with their name, maybe the agenda number. That's the difference. And again, that has been a policy decision in the city council that, in order to provide that service, there has been, or would be, a general fund cost to do so.
Thank you very much, Chris.
The one, I wanna make sure this is not the only concern, because I hear the speaker speak, speak each time on this item. They mention transparency and viewing the meeting isn't necessarily getting yourself on TV. That shouldn't be the motive. It should be the delineation of the meeting. That is what should be important. And I, even in the letters to the editor, that I believe Bruce Leinbach wrote, he mentioned, and maybe I'm incorrect, but he did have a letter to the editor, mentioned that the speakers are not identified. That is not what transparency should be about. It should be about the, the meeting being transmitted to the public, not making sure everyone else gets their five minutes of fame. That's not what taxpayers' dollars should be spent on. The other stuff I full, totally understand and can sympathize with and figure out how to achieve it, but just saying that the speaker should get their face on camera, that shouldn't be the motivation from any speaker. And I think Alfred does do a good job, you know, I know he's filming me right now. Go ahead. It was first councilmember Satello, then councilmember Sykes back.
I agree. I agree what you're saying, but what, like I'm saying, we got, we have received a report from Chris, and I would like it brought out where everybody else could see the same report. And that way, we're all on the same basis. This way, we have, they have the same knowledge, and we have, that we were given to us. And that's the only thing I was asking for at that time.
And I think, in that, Chris, we need to get a public records request done from those cities, instead of it just being, and the resident may be totally correct, but we need it absolutely in writing all their costs from them in their writing on their letterhead, not someone else's assumption. Because I'm telling you, sometimes things are said here by members of the public, and it's not necessarily 100% the way the contract was delineated. In Rosemeat, per se, which Forrest speaks of numerous times, the commercial rate was being raised 41.9% to the commercial customers. Well, that's a very important fact to mention. If that's how you're, you're keeping the residence cost down by driving your business out, you need to make sure that's stated fairly, because that's the problem when you compare rates, all the rates are spread differently like that. Some people use the franchise fees that is received by the city to lower the residential cost. Well, that comes, that cuts to the taxpayers here, at other services that may be provided. So I'm just saying, there is things, you have to look at everything, and I know you've worked a lot of time on that forest. Councilmember Sykes.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Regarding the caveat for, because you talked about hire, could we make sure we had the caveat of volunteers? Because that was, in your last statement, that was, that was omitted. We talked about hires. We did not talk about what we could do with the capacity when we have volunteers. So let's make sure we please get those cities, as, as the mayor asked for, written, as to how they ascertain, how they obtain the volunteers, and how they operate on the volunteer basis. That's, that's very extremely important in this financial environment. Okay? Thank you.
And I believe Athens has sent us a letter regarding their contract also anyway, so if, if Fred's gonna, councilmember Sykes is gonna have it on the agenda to bring forward that item. I don't mind looking at the broadcast also. The one thing I would explain to when people say about volunteers, they came here where they're paying people, and they can't get people to show up. So I'm just saying. We can't get poll workers to show up when we're paying them, but we're saying we can get other people to show up. And what we're gonna be concerned with is, if a volunteer doesn't show up, if you have to send a staff member back there, which is out of his or her category, which is a violation of our union workshop rules here. If it's not in your union workshop rules, we just can't tell you, you're filming today. That's outside of our rules. We have a unionized workforce here, so it may be easy to say, you just direct someone to go back there? In a union house, you may think that can be done, but when we used to go to ICSE, we had to have someone dolly the racks for our displays for commercial development by one group. You had to then phone the electrician to go plug in your display. If you plugged it in, you had to unplug it and undo it all. I'm just telling you, it may be when you need ice or sodas, you have to phone the union caterer and have them deliver the stuff, or your stuff will be taken away from you. That's just how it works in those union-type shops. We have a union shop here, and I wanna make sure we're not asking one of our employees to go outside of what, that we've hired them to do and do something they haven't. And I know, Fred, you come from a unionized workforce. We have to somewhat honor the categories here, but I understand everything we have going on. Go ahead, councilmember Sykes. Let's get this done by 9:10.
Yes, yes, real brief. I don't know how long Mr. Williams has been volunteering, but I, if I recall, he may have missed one or two meetings. So I, I think we can get one or two volunteers, and I think that should, that should cover the bill. So, thank you, sir.
And as you've seen on our reports, we have now, there's new state law that requires us to provide workers' compensation for volunteers. We just had to do that recently. I believe that was out in our report. If you have someone volunteering for you, they get injured, they're on your workman's compensation policy. So we need to understand that. That's brand-new state law against us also. Okay, we have Athens in the broadcast coming back. Is there anything other comments? Is there any adjournments? I did not get any. Does anyone have any adjournments in memory of anybody? Thank God, we had a good week. Motion to adjourn.
No move. Second.
Second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
9:05.